The directees, after the directors and all the unit owners in attendance have had an opportunity to express their point of view, the directors would then vote. These rules could also be used during committee meetings, but I'd leave that up to the chairperson of the committee at that time. This policy could be posted in each building bulletin board as well as the association bulletin board in the clubhouse. This way, all the unit owners as well as the directors have an expectation of the type of behavior that should be done. And I think that posting and following these procedures will create a professional atmosphere at our meetings. It'll allow for a full airing of all pertinent views and opinions, and I think it'll encourage unit owners to attend and participate. So I'm recommending that we institute this and publish it.
It is 7:36. I call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Charles Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Marvin Tao.
Here.
Francis Misero here. Mark Richmond.
Here.
Lloyd Boslett here. Gerald Miro.
Here.
Michael Schenckel.
There.
Jerry D'Arcy could not be here at an idea school event. Sharon Precio.
Here.
We have a forum to proceed with the business.
Our next item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. I turn the microphone over to our secretary, Francis Misero.
Since we didn't have a regular board meeting for January, we had little backlog on minutes to be approved. I had furnished all of the directors with copies of the three sets. Did you have an opportunity to look them over?
Yes.
Then if there's no objection, I would appreciate a motion to waive the reading of and accept as presented the minutes of the board meeting of November 21, December 19, and the organizational meeting of last week.
I so moved. My second. Mark Richmond motion. Marvin second.
Are there any objections? Thank you. Pass unanimously.
Our next agenda item for business is approval of sales and leases, and I will pass the microphone to the chairman of sales and leasing, Francis Misero.
During the month of January, the committee met twice. We met on Friday, January 8, and took the following actions. We approved the sale of Marseille 1W, a two-bedroom unit for $32,000 all cash. The association recovered the sum of $19,932.87 at settlement. This included $1,384, the 1% of the original mortgage which we got from the bank, $10,101.76, the total amount of the special assessment due, $4,325.72 in delinquent maintenance, and $2,478 in attorney fees, and $1,643.93 in miscellaneous late charges, interest and fees. I need to comment here that this is what our attorney, Trapani, is doing for us. He's doing a great job. We approved a permanent occupancy permit for Grenoble 3Z, a two-bedroom unit. We approved the sale of Azurik 1J, a two-bedroom unit for $90,000 all cash. All outstanding assessments had already been recovered by the association when the property changed hands last February. We approved an annual lease for Marseille 2C, a one-bedroom unit for $600 a month. The unit is owned by International Village and is exempt from the 25% rental cap. We approved a permanent occupancy permit for Orleans 3D, a one-bedroom unit. Approved a permanent occupancy permit for Adel Weiss 1L, a two-bedroom unit. We approved the sale of Heidelberg 2Z, a two-bedroom unit, for $73,500 all cash. We recovered a special assessment payout of $9,589.60. Excuse me, my hands don't work all the time. On January 18, the committee met again and took the following actions. We approved a rollover lease for St. Moritz 1W, a two-bedroom unit for $1,100 a month. Approved an annual lease for Interlock 3D, a one-bedroom unit, for $950 a month. Unit was exempt from the 25% cap. The owner did not vote for the amendment. Approved an annual lease for Adel Weiss 2R, an efficiency unit, for $675 a month. Unit was exempt from the 25% cap. Owner did not vote for the amendment. We disapproved leases for St. Moritz 1R, Nottingham 1K, and St. Moritz 2Y. These units are subject to the 25% rental cap, and the owners have been notified by The committee would appreciate a motion to accept the reports and to approve the actions of the committee.
Have a question. Question? Question?
To accept the sales and leases reports as presented and approve the actions of the committee.
We have questions. We have questions.
Of course. Yes, of course.
Questions first.
Discussion. Discussion. Is that right? Discussion.
You should make the motion first and discuss.
Yeah, you make the motion first and discuss.
Yeah, we make a motion and then we discuss. I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Yes. Francis?
Yes.
Please tell me...
Hold on, Michael.
Yes?
Please tell me the dates of the Marseille 1W. When was that?
Mark, I did not... I don't keep those dates. I'll be real happy to always furnish you with anything that you need if I know in advance.
We need dates on every one of these events.
In what way do you need the dates, sir? I'm sorry, what do you mean?
You said there was a sale of Marseille 1W for $32,000, of which $10,101.76 was special assessment.
No, sir. The sale price was $32,000. On top of whatever the purchaser paid the seller, we recovered all of those other sums either from the bank or from the seller.
But you said the recovered amount for special assessment was $10,101.76, didn't you?
Correct.
Isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
All I'm asking is, do you remember the date of that sale?
At the time that this report was done, I believe I sent you an email that the settlement had not taken place at that time.
That's fine. Was it done in 2011 or 2012?
It was done in 2011. Oh, I see what you mean. I don't know.
And it was 19...
I don't know the date of the settlements.
Do you know, Michael?
Yeah, it was in early December, and it was $19,000 total that we collected beyond the safe harbor normal amount. Wasn't the breakdown of the $19,000...
No, the date. The date is critical, and we have to have the dates on all these events.
I can give you the closing date after the meeting.
Okay, fine. And what you're telling me, what I want to make sure of, is that the special assessment payout was $10,101.76, Francis. Is that correct?
Sir, I don't have any control over that.
You just gave it to me. You read it.
You answered just for the amount?
The amount of the special assessment. Excellent. Now, on Heidelberg 2Z, you happen to know what date that occurred on?
No, sir, I don't keep those dates.
Well, we'd like to get those dates from now on. Would that be all right?
I may not always have them at the time the report is given at the meeting, but I'll do my best to get them. They're always available. They just may not be available at the time of my report.
That will be great.
And if there's any other information that you need, Mark, please, just give me a memo. We'll do anything you want.
Now, I want to do it right now if I can. Do you know if the Heidelberg 2Z was 2011 or 2012?
I already told you I don't have those dates, sir.
You don't know that. You did read to me that the special assessment pay down was $9,589.60.
Correct.
Okay. Could you kindly find the dates of those sales?
I can find them for you online after the meeting.
Can you find them, Michael? That'll be fine with me. I just want the dates.
Okay, from now on, I'll get them if they're available at the time of the report.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other questions, Jimmy? Yep, Jerry?
I'm not questioning this 25% business. If I understood Francis correctly, she said there's a unit that's owned by International Village that was rented but is not subject. Thank you.
The amendment specifically excludes the village from the amendment.
Well, but then what does that do as far as the percentage is concerned going forward? If we... If there are... Does that raise or lower the percentage?
It obviously is trying to raise the percentage.
It doesn't count as far as renting it, but it raises the percentage when we rent it. I don't understand that. How can it not count and yet raise the percentage?
We...
What? The exemption from... The association-owned property is exempt from sales and leasing requirements. Why would it be part of the 25%?
May I? Jerry, my understanding is this. The village is exempt from the 25% ceiling. It's in our documents. The documents are very clear that any sales or lease that are owned by or controlled by the village, by the association, are exempt due to not count towards the 25%.
Our documents contemplate the association owning units.
It does.
It does.
And it will not count against the 25%.
And it does not count.
It's a zip. It doesn't exist.
So therefore, if we have five units, I understand. How many units does the association own?
You know what?
Seven units? So there's 832 units.
No, I'm sorry. Let's clarify this. The association does not own the units. We have title to the units.
But that's what we're renting. We're renting the ones. The association doesn't own anything.
No. They are bank-owned, but we have the title.
Right, and so there's seven units that are bank-owned, and we have the title to, that are not included in the 25%. So if we have 832 units, there's only 825 that are...
Right, but Jerry, to be honest with you, not all seven units are being rented.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe the last number I heard, and let's verify this, I believe it was three units that were actually have a tenant. Is that correct?
Two, and I think we're working on...
Yeah, right. So it's two for sure that we have, and a third that we're working on.
How many units do we have rented that is adding up to the 25%? Does anybody know the number? They're throwing out 25%.
Well, it's 25% of 832 units.
Well, I'm looking at it the other way. How many units do we consider rented? How many units are there that we consider as being rented?
Last I heard, it was 220.
There are about 220 units.
220 units.
Yes.
Okay. So 220 units, you're saying it adds up to 25%.
Of 832.
208 is actually 25%. 208 would be 25... We're over 25% now.
208 is 25%, and we have 200 and...
About 220.
20, so that means...
We're 12 over the limit.
There's nothing available for rent.
That's correct.
And it's owned by the village.
That's correct.
Or an exempt owner.
Or an exempt owner.
The only exempt owner would be a village, correct? Is there another exempt owner?
No.
Grandfathered in.
Those owners who did not agree to the amendment.
Or...
Only those unit owners who agreed to that cap. Wait a second. If that's the case, is the 25% of rental units that are allowed, is that of 25% of the people who did not vote for that?
Very good question, Jerry.
Very good question.
We don't have an answer.
We don't have an answer.
We're waiting for the answer, not the question.
Don't have an answer.
We don't have an answer.
But that's an important...
Yes.
We all agree with you, Jerry.
Very important, by all.
I mean, so how can we turn down people if we don't know the number that's proper to turn them down?
Well, we know the number.
Well, I understand that we're turning down people who are looking to rent apartments based on the 25%.
Correct.
And yet we don't know what that number is based on we don't know who has signed on to that part of our amendments.
Yeah.
That's correct. So, I mean, we're losing... See, frankly, frankly, I'm... Well, I guess we don't...
We're waiting for clarification.
Waiting for clarification.
Please.
This is an important item. We're denying people the right to rent things without knowing what the numbers are.
You're absolutely right, Jerry.
More than important, and something that anybody that's trying to rent and being turned down has a legitimate right.
Jerry, can you clarify what exactly you're saying? We don't know what the numbers are?
I think I can respond. Okay, Jerry, there's a number of 25%. And if all things being equal, if there were no exemption, that would be 280 units. However, a certain number are exempt from that. People who didn't vote for it, association-owned units. So that number is actually... So that 280 is actually the lower number than that. If we are now actually have 220 renters, whatever that real number is, I guess we can find out and we can get it, but for all practical purposes, it doesn't matter because we're way over the number. Well, to me, it matters. To you, it doesn't matter, okay? But to me, it matters. I'm an investor, okay? And if I would consider buying more units here because I can't see units sitting and not paying because I live here and I'm interested in the units, every unit paying, you're prohibiting me from buying units because I'm not a flipper. There are some flippers here that buy and sell, and they're great. They're not... That's in no way negative. I think that's wonderful, but that's only one side of the assistance that the association needs. The other side of the assistance are people who buy and don't flip for one reason or another. It's philosophical. Some people like to flip, and some people don't. And I don't think that this 25% serves the village well, okay? Especially now realizing that there is no number. Basically, the 208 that's based on a fictitious number, I mean, a number that doesn't mean anything because it doesn't contemplate the people who didn't sign on to that amendment. Technically, we could have 100 people that could rent, and yet we got 200-plus rentals.
You're absolutely correct.
Again, it's meaningless, and it's hurtful to the association.
I think, Jerry, I think you have a very valid point, and I think this is a very serious question that this board has to address in a very short period.
And I would make a comment that the only... At this moment, the only solution to that is for another amendment to be passed by the membership to increase that percentage. As long as our docs include that 25% cap, and we are now over that 25% cap, the only way we're going to solve that problem is to change our docs.
Michael has a comment. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Have you read the opinion from our attorney, Trapani, regarding this issue? Have you had the opportunity to read his opinion?
I didn't really have.
No, you need to read that. It was three weeks ago. And it actually parallels what I had explained previously, and he confirmed it. We have... And the law was passed as far as sales of condominiums in November of 2004, that grandfathers in any owners prior to that date or prior to changes in the rental amendments. Our 25% cap went into effect in 2008. Therefore, if you were not around to vote for it and you are an owner prior to the change of the amendment, your grandfathered in. Now, how does that affect the 25% cap if those... We may have 100 owners who are grandfathered. Therefore, the cap may only affect those who are new owners. We need an interpretation by our attorney and/or a new amendment to clarify it.
It is an unequal, in my opinion, unequal law or regulation. Because what it does is... And I think, Jerry, we talked very briefly today, in that what it does is that it awards some people and punishes others, and I think that's not fair. And I think that this board, hopefully with the membership, can get this straightened out so that all people are treated equal.
One last one.
Hold on, Sharon has...
The only question I have, is there penalty for going over that 25%?
I can't hear you, Sharon. I'm sorry.
Is there penalty? What's the ramifications to going over the 25%?
I mean, there's no penalty. Basically, what we're doing, we're saying in the office right now, and our hands are basically tied, and we don't like our hands tied, is that we get to the 25%, and we have to refuse rentals. And it's not fair. It's just not fair. So we need, as a board, to really get the membership to understand that this is not a fair way of handling it. Why do we punish some people and reward others? Yes.
You may serve... May I? I'll get back to you.
We each have a turn, and we'll go on only.
As I've expressed previously to others, we now have two classes of owners. We have one class that is privileged because they're grandfathered in to a very important economic advantage in that they could rent their properties at will. Then we have others who are disadvantaged because they purchased their apartments after the amendment was adopted, or because at the time of the amendment, they felt it was proper to make the cap, and they voted for it. If we approve a lease for someone who did not vote for the amendment, as we have just recently, we violate the 25% cap. If we impose the 25% cap, we violate these owners' right to their grandfather clause. Stop. I have no way to turn one way or the other. The state statute is bad to begin with, saying that with all sales and leases, only those who vote for the amendment are bound by it. And that's a stupid rule because the majority should be able to decide for the association. If we change our amendments to increase the ratio of rentals, we have to be careful not to get up into the 35% range, or then we're in a different class of enterprise, I understand.
That's correct.
What is that?
It's like a resort.
Lose your tax status.
Is that the correct term?
Non-for-profit...
We wouldn't be nonprofit.
That's not fair. Not for profit.
They don't know what percentage that is.
They ask an informational question.
Let me just clarify why we have this problem now. We would not have had this problem if the more toward 18 months we threw all our sales and leasing regulations out.
That's enough.
So we let all these people in then?
No. We're moving on.
I just have an informational question. What if you are an original owner of condominium? Are you affected by this in any way? If you are an original...
If you voted for the amendment, you are.
If you voted for it.
Yeah.
If you didn't vote for it, there's no problem. You can keep renting as long as you want.
We have...
I, you know, I think we can debate this all night. I think Jerry brought a very valid and a very important... Jerry and I stand on opposite sides of this, but I think that his is a valid point, and I do not like that we have two classes of citizens here in the village. Some way, somehow, this board with the membership got to work together to resolve it. That's the bottom line.
Charles, one last question, if you don't mind. Do you know whether people, owners, who signed the amendments or didn't sign the amendments, did they know when they signed or didn't sign what they were getting into?
I don't know that. I got... Jerry, it's very difficult to say. How in the world can any of us get into someone's head to understand how they voted?
It's a question, was it in the document?
I can answer that question because I was here.
If you sign this, it means you are required or bound by it. If you didn't sign it, you're not bound by it. It's not what's in your head. It's one in the paper.
Jerry, Jerry, excuse me. You know what? I'm a new guy in town, so let's get someone in the wuss here, and Michael said that he'll clarify that answer for you. Okay?
Yeah, I was here. Not only was I here, but I was very involved in this change because at the time, in 2006, we didn't allow any rentals. Our condo docs read that if you bought an apartment here, you were grandfathered in if you already owned it, but if any new owners after 2006, January, could never rent their apartment. This happened at a time when the housing market begins to tank. The last thing you want to a community is to have is a rule where you can never rent. You're not going to appeal to any buyers. So in 2006, we had a lot of town hall meetings to discuss how we were going to address this housing crash. And one of the ways we came up with was to have an investment opportunity for current owners to buy up the foreclosures. At the time, in 2007, we had about 90 rentals in this place that left room for about 118 more, and at the time, we were approaching 100 foreclosures. The idea was to transfer the foreclosures to new owners, giving privilege to the ones who already owned and paid their maintenance on time to buy those units and to upgrade them to a certain standard that the board approved, including water conservation and certain infrastructural, basic things, and they could rent it right away. This plan was beginning to work, and it did work. The reason... You know, our condo docs evolved with time. In the last 35 years, they've evolved to where they are now. But in 2004, nobody knew that this little-known law was passed. Our attorney at the time named Michael Bender, we were voting on this very issue in January of 2008, or December in 2007. And at that meeting, Michael Bender told me, you know, there's a new law that may affect this. I went home that night, and it was up till 4:00 in the morning, searching my Florida condo laws, and found that law. Nobody who voted for that change was made aware of that law, and nobody knew about it. Whether that affects, whether or not... Certainly, they wouldn't have voted for it had they known that law existed, but is ignorance an excuse? I don't know. But that's Jerry's question, and that's how we wound up at that point where we increased the number of units you could own from two to four and an investment opportunity, which makes sense. So we could keep slum lords out, get current owners who would take an interest in the village and who lived here, upgrade them, and make those transfers and get those people back on the maintenance rolls. We got off track somewhere in 2010.
Michael, you're not... I don't think you're answering my question. My question is, the owner, when he signed...
Was not aware.
Was not aware, Jerry. It was not in... Not a question of aware. That's in his mind. Was it in the document that he signed, that if you sign this document...
That's the law. Jerry, that's the law. We were not aware of the law.
It was a law change. It's not our document. So it wasn't in the documents.
Yeah, but if you sign a document, I would think the document tells you how that...
The law was enacted at that point.
Let me respond. Hold on, hold on. Come on, guys, one more time.
Yeah, this takes up too much time. Guys, this is not going to get resolved.
Jerry, what the person was signing was a change in our documents. Right. Okay. Anybody... I signed that. I approved or I voted on that particular agent. I was not aware of state statutes as it applied to that document. Well, I think that should have been part of the information sent to the owners.
Okay. What was done?
Disclaimer. If you sign this, you are beholden.
Jerry, hindsight's great, but it didn't happen at the time.
I think our attorney...
Okay, what we need to do, Jerry, what we need to do really is the caucus and really look at this problem and try to resolve this, or at least come to some reasonable understanding how we're going to resolve this. Okay, can we...
Jerry should head up a committee look.
Right. Can we move on to the... There's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded for the approval of the sales and leases. Can we call... Joe, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question on this issue.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
One thing you haven't discussed, and maybe Michael can give us a quick answer. Aside from losing our tax status, it's my understanding that mortgage companies are basing their approvals of mortgage on lower rental numbers in a community, not higher percentage. Michael, how does that affect...
The banks, that's why we came up with the 25%, because that was the acceptable level for the banks. You couldn't get a mortgage in a condo if you had more than 25% renters.
I'm sorry, Mike, that's incorrect.
No matter how many renters.
No, I'm sorry. We had a meeting, I had a meeting. I spent 10 minutes, unfortunately, it was only 10 minutes, but it was made a very merry clear. Rental percentage is not important. What's important is the delinquent, the delinquency ratio. Okay? It's the ratio. Okay, rental, the bank does not look at the rental ratio. They look at the delinquent ratio. Okay, let's move on, because we can talk all night on this. This is a very interesting and important subject, but I think that we're going to move on. We have a motion on the table, and we have a second.
Are there any objections?
Any objections?
Yes. Not objection.
Can I call the robe in?
No.
Mark, you're out of order, I'm sorry, buddy.
I don't even want to comment on the minutes.
Okay, we'll allow it.
I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment or the motion. And the amendment is, I would like to have, in future dates...
I can't hear you.
In the future, have dates.
Have dates. In the future, I'd like to have dates for each event. And specifically for the minutes that were read from the Sales and Leasing Committee, I want the date of the Marseille 1W sale, and I want the date of the Heidelberg 2Z sale to be put in the minutes, please. Thank you.
Any objection?
And include in the future, the dates of closing will be included in the Sales and Leasing. I know, but that, so we have...
Any objection? Motion carried. We'll move on to the establish of the date of the 2012 budget meeting. We have to give ownership a minimum of two weeks' notice to mail the budget. And we have a proposed budget date of February 27th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's just a meeting, isn't it? The date of amendment?
No, no, this is the budget meeting. Establish the date of the 2012 budget meeting is proposed on the 27th of February. I have a motion on the table, who made the motion?
So you made the motion, and it was seconded by Collette.
Great. Any objection?
Can it be sent out by that? You said it has to be said two weeks before.
Yes, 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 in fact, we looked at, Jerry, yeah, we looked at the dates. The first date that we looked at was the 20th of February. But we really figured that maybe we should give ourselves a little fudge area. So it was decided, yeah, so we decided on the 27th. I'm going to pass it over to Frances.
We decided on the 27th because we already scheduled the reconvening of the membership meeting to waive reserves for the 23rd of February. We're hoping that we will have that accomplished by the time we have the budget meeting. We'll know then that the membership either has or has not waived the reserves. So that at the budget meeting, we will adopt a budget according to the membership vote. Understand? Is that okay?
But Mark, how does that affect the requirement of the bank loan that you talked about at Canada's night? Having to have an approved budget to them by the 15th?
Marie has already spoken to them.
Okay.
And they're going to be... She should believe that they were going to be lenient with that. The last board did not follow the budget until late March.
I hope so. Collette, I don't, in view of the circumstances, I don't think the bank, especially since we've been so good, I don't think the bank would give us any problem extending it.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure we don't get into any issues.
I don't know whether we will or not.
No, we did it with that understanding.
Any objections to the February 27th budget date? Motion carried.
Question on that?
Sure, Joe.
The issue of waiving the reserves. How do you expect unit owners to waive reserves if they don't have the budget? They're going to have it by...
We mail the budget out.
Well, we've already voted on waiving reserves. We didn't meet the bar, but we still don't have the budget.
They will now have a budget as well. It doesn't nullify the original mailing of the waiver. They'll have the budget, and the cover letter will encourage them to get in their proxy if they've already done so.
And we scheduled February 23rd
For that meeting.
For that meeting.
When is the board going to approve that budget? You've got to approve the budget before you mail it out.
No, we do not. The board approves the budget at the budget meeting.
Well, again, that goes back to my original question. How can you expect the unit owners to waive reserves if we don't have an approved budget to waive the reserve?
You don't, they don't waive the reserves on an approved budget. They waive reserves on a proposed budget, and that's what they will have.
And then the board approves it, Joe.
And then the board approves it.
Okay. Just trying to understand the process.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
Marie coming with those copies?
They're right here.
They're right there. Waiting to go back to the front row.
Item number seven.
When do we mail it?
Yeah.
Within the week, we hope.
Yeah. Is, agenda number seven is authorize mailing of the proposed 2012 budget and notice of the budget meeting to the membership. It's proposed that the mailing will happen before the 3rd of February. No later than, I'm sorry, no later than the 6th of February, which gives us the minimum two-week requirement.
Say it again?
Yes. The proposed date, for the mailing of the budget to the membership is no later, the proposed budget is no later than the 6th of February, which is, which gives the membership the minimum two-week, more than the two-week required notice.
Are we mailing both copies, Joe?
We mail both copies, with reserve and without reserve. Any objections to that?
I do have a question.
Question, no. Yes, go ahead, question, right. Hold on, Marvin, I think I have to, there has to be a motion, and a second, then we'll have the questions. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that we authorize the mailing of the proposed budget to the membership no later than February 6th, 2012.
Do I have a seconder?
I second.
Sharon seconded. Thank you, Sharon. You have a question, Marvin?
Yes. On all, I remember on previous proposed budgets, the reserves, there was, the number was broken out either by building or what the purpose of the reserves or a certain amount for roads, a certain amount for other purposes.
That will be done.
Yeah, I see nothing in this document that I was just handed that breaks out the $207,000.
Yes, it is.
Where?
No, it's not like that.
That's what we were trying to do.
$207,000?
Yeah, I don't see words broken out in what the purpose of the reserves.
Oh, yes, you're right, you're right, right. The categories and the age, life expectancy of those categories.
Yeah.
We are missing that.
We're doing that, that will be added to the budget.
Okay, so this document we were just handed is incomplete.
Completely cut out.
And a complete document will be prepared prior to the mailing. Okay, thank you.
This document is lacking in two respects.
The increase that the members would have to pay if they did not waive reserves, and the breakdown of how the reserves are allocated. And those will be added to that portion of the budget.
Thank you.
And also, obviously, there'll be a cover letter going out to all the membership. Do any opposition to the motion?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Jerry, please.
I'm looking at the fully funded reserves, and I'm astounded at how small it is. I remember in the past, when, you know, the board was constantly against the reserve, to me, and my recollection is correct, and I guess I have the paperwork, if I look back far enough, the numbers were much, much higher. Here, we're talking about, I don't know, it's less than, it looks like 6% or 7%. And it used to be, when I looked at figures, if you had, if you voted for a fully funded reserve, your maintenance would increase 50% minimum. If you're paying 300, you'd probably be paying 450. I don't get it. I mean, I don't know where this number comes from. It looks like 6% or 7%. I'm just surprised.
Closer to 15%.
Pardon?
Closer to 15%, Jerry.
If the budget is 3,224,000...
No, no, the number on top. Based on the 2,744,000...
All right, so even 2,700...
207,000 is reserves for the year.
207 is not more than 10%. Those 2,744,000, 10% would be 274,000, this is 207,000.
You're correct, Jerry.
That must be 8% or 7%. And I just cannot imagine, because in the past, as I say, the fully funded reserve really ratcheted up your maintenance. And I know I belong to other associations, and they, like in Enbaron where I belong, they charge you 25% of the fully funded reserves. In the past, it was 50% of the fully funded reserve. And that would be a joke, I mean, based on this number here. So I'm just questioning the number. 207 sounds low, and since, as was pointed out by Marvin, there's nothing to go along with it to show how it's assigned to the roads and the roof and the this and the that. That number looks fake to me. It doesn't, I mean, there's no way of substantiating that number.
I've seen them, and, you know, you have parking lots that are good for 10 or 15 years, roads that are good for 20 years.
Well, this reserve is not to do right now. The reserve is exactly what it's called, it's for a reserve.
Replacing in 20 years.
It's a percentage depending on the lifespan of the capital improvement. But just, I'm just bringing up, it sounds low to me. I'd be interested in what Marvin's interested in.
They'll say the actual, the actual origin.
Yeah, where that comes from.
Replacement cost tomorrow.
I think this was worked out by the accountant anyway, Jerry. Correct, Michael? Yeah, it was worked out by the CPA. But you know what? Why don't we clarify this with the accountant? Any opposition to the motion? I'm going to pass the microphone over to Michael Schenkel about the engagement letter for the 2011 audit. He has a lot more information than I do. Michael?
As you probably know, we have a CPA and accounting firm we've had for about 10 years, nine, 10 years. And as our accounting procedures have become a little more complicated by self-managing and lack of accounting controls, we spent a lot of time in the last six months reconstructing our year-to-date expenses and an accounting, set of accounting procedures that will take forward into 2012. So we have, we're required to sign an engagement letter with this accounting firm to do this work for us. And we have deadlines. Particularly the bank, February 15th would like to have seen a financial statement. With the budget, the budget is a guideline. And, but we have to have this engagement letter for the accountant to complete our financial statement. And we have 120 days after the first of the year to comply with state requirements for that, which would be the end of April. So I spoke with our accountant today, and he's prepared to begin this work on Monday after we sign this engagement letter. And, you know, this is a busy time of the year, a year for accountants in general. But we should be well within the time to meet the deadlines for the state requirements. And our financial statement for 2011 will be, probably take a couple months and we'll have it. But we have to agree to the engagement. Now, what we do beyond the first quarter of the year when this is all done in terms of future accounting, this hasn't been determined, but we have to complete where we are now and get through to the financial statement. And then we're looking at accounting procedures and changes that may take place beyond the first quarter of this year.
Thank you, Michael.
I have a question, Marie. First, let me make something clear. The, I have the year-end financial audit will cost us $6,000. I have a question for Marie. Marie, what did it cost us last year?
It cost us right around the same, I don't have the actual...
I think my recollection was $5,500. That was my recollection.
There was some additional work for the bank.
Right. And I think they asked for an extra $1,500 after that, correct?
Correct.
So it cost us basically $7,000 last year.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any comments? First of all, let's make a motion and get a seconder, and then we'll open the discussion. Do we have a motion on the table?
I move that we authorize the president to sign the engagement letter for the President Crozenzio firm to do our financial accounting for the sum of $6,000.
Do I have a seconder?
I second.
Marvin seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mark.
Here's the letter.
Who seconded?
We need an audited financial statement.
Audits, yes.
The accountant says, although we will, this is as of September 22nd in a letter to us.
Yeah.
Although we will apply certain limited procedures with respect to the required supplementary information, we will not audit the information and we will not express an opinion on it.
They always do that, Mark, that's common.
All right.
That's a common procedure.
You're happy with it?
Yeah, that's standard procedure. Because if they did know, it's standard procedure. Okay, any other?
They're succumbing, then. Okay.
Any other, yes, sir.
When I was on the board in 2008, and I dealt with Mr. Crozenzio.
De Crozenzio.
De Crozenzio. Thank you. The fee was $5,000, as I recall.
Right.
And he was a gentleman, he was pleasant to work with. He had some, had some problems as usual, and he never was someone to up the ante. So I, from my dealings with him, I think that he's a worthwhile fellow to stick with.
Yeah. Any objections to the engagement letter being signed? Any comments from the audience? Motion carried. I will pass the microphone over now to our property manager, Marie Pobchow. We have a situation in the idle vice. We have a trash compactor that is finished, it's not functioning. And Marie, would you take the microphone? Thank you.
We did this a couple months back with the Zurich. The trash compactor just, they could possibly repair it, but it would cost more than it would be to replace it. At the moment, the cost to replace it is $4,000, which is what it was for the Zurich. We get a two-year warranty with it. The board members have pictures in their packets of what exactly is wrong with the trash compactor.
We do not.
You do not?
We do not.
Oh, the picture, okay.
Yeah. But we all saw the pictures.
Okay.
I didn't see the pictures, but I'll show you the pictures. Marie?
Yes, sir.
Did you get bids for the Zurich building?
We got, we got a bid from our normal place, which is S&amp;S Technology, as well as we got a bid from the garbage company that we currently have. The garbage company that we currently have that does our waste, take away our waste was about $2,000 more than our, the company that we use now.
And the Zurich thing working properly?
Yes.
Is that the original compactor? How many years of life expectancy does it have?
The, I believe that is the original one that is in the idle vice. That's why it's just been fixed so many times.
Does it only last 30 years? Is that, yeah?
They're telling, yeah, it's subjective. He's telling me about 15.
Yeah.
But I think he's maybe conservative.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
President, I'd like to make a motion.
S&amp;S.
I move we-
Hold on. Is there a motion on the table to approve the idle vice trash compactor replacement?
I just was all moving.
Yeah, you have, you have to make me that.
I move that, I move that we replace the-
Do I have a second? Jerry, did you second this? Did you second this?
If you'd like me to, I'd be willing.
Okay. Mark Rich made the motion, and Jerry, Jerry seconded. And it's my biggest pleasure to adjourn this meeting at 8:25. There was no objection. There was no objection.